Good evening. I'd like to open a meeting of May fourth, 2016, Town of Newbury Planning Board. And before we get into our normal agenda, there is an issue that we need to work out with the applicant for Borrego. Mainly because we have one of our members, George Morse, who's the vice chair, has missed one meeting and is ill tonight and cannot attend. And so we, we also have our associate member has missed two meetings. And you can't do that and then opine or deliberate. And so we're left with the prospect that if we continue the meeting tonight, that we would left with, left with a, a quorum of four. And four votes. And I guess it would be up to you if you wanted to proceed that way. Or would, would it make more sense to ensure that George can be here? And all of us can be here and put this discussion of your application off for sometime next week. Is when I'm hope that George is no longer contagious and infectious and all these other things that he has right now. So I guess I then, then go back to you, Steve and Zach and Havy and see what you guys would like to do.
Well, I guess we're up against a deadline for getting misapproved. Which we can talk about in our presentation. That was gonna be part of it. But I guess we would be looking to at the latest due Monday or Tuesday. Wednesday, Thursday doesn't really work.
The, yeah, I think, let me, Paul, am I right that we, can, can we take any testimony tonight?
Not if you want to.
Not, not if we want to continue it.
Not if you want to continue and ha- and have George be an eligible member. If you take any testimonies.
George cannot, George cannot be.
Please speak up just a little bit. If I have to vote on something, I'd really like to know what I'm voting on. Especially Paul's opinion on this.
George, okay, go ahead.
So what I was saying was that in order for George to remain an eligible voter moving forward, the board can't hear any substantive testimony tonight if the matter is going to be continued.
Is it a matter of what?
If the matter is going to be continued, which we haven't established yet.
I'm not sure what's a matter of.
This, this application. So if this hearing is going to be continued to a date sometime next week.
Yeah, okay.
If we take any substantive information tonight, even if George is available next week, he would no longer be eligible.
He's out of it. He's off.
Right, 'cause he would've.
Then he'd be gone. Right. So, so can I ask, can I want to make sure this is, I, I would like to find out. Because we've done a little bit of research here and I, I don't find anywhere where this May eleventh deadline comes from. And can I ask the applicant that?
I would not give that, that would be receiving substantive information. I would not get into that issue until we.
Okay.
With regards to next week, just so you know, I'm not available Monday or Tuesday. I am available Wednesday. And I think you said Tuesday was elections.
Tuesday, we can't, we can't do a Tuesday 'cause it's election.
You can't come Wednesday?
I can come Wednesday. I am not available on Monday. I'm in Shrewsbury Monday night.
Jim, where are you?
I'm available.
That's the eleventh. What about you? Can you do it?
If that's the only day that it can be done, I'll figure it out.
Well, it's, it sounds that way 'cause if the attorney, if our attorney can't be here Monday and Tuesday, the next closest day.
I'm good any night. I don't care.
Is Wednesday. Yeah. So.
I guess I have a question just in terms of the request to make a provisional decision by the eleventh.
I would avoid having any discussion on that issue until we complete the issue of whether or not there's going to be a continuance. And if there's a continuance, then I wouldn't discuss.
My, my question goes to that in terms of just looking at schedules. Whether it's, it's feasible to meet the request next week. So I'm, I'm just trying to.
Well, we can, we can let the applicant respond. If we say that the board can't meet any sooner than next Wednesday, the applicants can certainly let us know that next Wednesday is too late for them. And that they want to move forward tonight. And then at which point we can take all the explanation we want to hear. 'Cause you're gonna be moving forward with four voters.
Yeah, it, it's not, I'm not looking for information from them. I'm more looking for information from the board. In terms of, assume we could schedule a meeting for Wednesday. At that stage, would we have sufficient information, given the recent communications from DEP, to make a decision on Wednesday?
And I think that's a question.
We don't know that.
That you'll only be able to answer after having held the hearing and received information and testimony from the applicant.
Jim?
How about Sunday?
I don't, I don't think you're allowed to hold meetings on Sundays.
Can't?
That I don't know.
I, I've never run into that. I would have to take away. It is also Mother's Day on Sunday.
Oh, that's a bad day. Oh, that's a bad day. Well, our other problem is we don't know about George's health. I mean, he's taking antibiotics now. I'd asked him earlier this evening to try to make it. And obviously, he felt he couldn't do it. That he was not well enough to come. So, you know.
We're not sure if he'll be here next week.
Precisely, precisely.
The further back you push it, the more likely.
Yeah, the more likely, I mean, he's, he's treating this. He's been to the doctor and, and he's treating it with antibiotics.
He's at home though. He's not in the hospital.
He was at the hospital today, but he's now at home.
He's, oh, he wasn't, he was admitted?
No.
Oh, okay. Just stated, yeah.
Okay. So.
That's a loser.
Yeah.
So I think we need to look at Wednesday.
Right.
Next week and then ask the applicant if that.
If that's, if that's valid.
If that's acceptable or if they want to proceed with four tonight.
Okay. I think that's where we are. Okay? So, as you all, Steve. So where we are is that we cannot meet Monday or Tuesday. We could meet Wednesday. And so if that's adequate for you, we will continue the meeting until next Wednesday. If it's not, and you don't want to continue it, then you will kind of force our hand a bit. And say, well, you have to then decide tonight, probably close it tonight. And just so you know, we still have a lot of questions. So, you know, I mean, based on information that we're getting back and forth from the, from DEP, et cetera, there, it raises a number of questions. So what would, what would you like to do?
But regardless, if we don't continue tonight, we'll always have only four voters.
No.
No, no.
If you continue tonight, you will have five.
Well, i- i- if you continue tonight without the presentation of testimony, you will have a full complement of voters at that continued date. If you present testimony tonight and then the board does not close the hearing and moves to another hearing night, you, you, from here on in, you were down to four voters.
Do you got, yeah, do you guys want to think about it and we'll open our meeting and talk about minutes and stuff like that and get to other issues?
Sure.
Why don't you do that? Okay. We have meeting minutes of April sixth. Any comments or thoughts about those and, or can I have a motion on those meetings, meeting minutes?
I move to accept the meeting minutes from Wednesday, April sixth, 2016.
Um, can I have a second?
Second.
Before I give the, the vote, just a note, Martha, on Caldwell. I think now that town meeting is over, that we want to sit down with Ginny and get a letter out on the agreement. Okay?
Yeah.
Okay. And so with that, I have no other comments. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. On the meeting minutes of, of, of April twentieth, can I have a motion on these minutes?
Well, I have a question on.
On twentieth?
Yeah, the twentieth.
Okay.
Item B, the final.
TW?
Yeah, TW excavating. The landscaping plan dated November and there's a blank there.
Right. I, I actually still haven't been able to get my hands on that plan. So that's a blank that needs to be filled in.
But they did, they did show it to us.
They did show it to us, yes.
So we know it exists.
So we know it exists.
So when you were doing, so you just need to go back and fill that in. Okay.
So you could approve as amended with that.
I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with that.
Any other thoughts on that? Okay. Uh, okay. Uh, was it, no, I didn't have a motion.
Move to approve the meeting minutes from Wednesday, April twentieth, 2016. As to be amended by Martha with inclusion of the date for the plans from TW excavating.
Okay. And I have a second.
Second.
Any further comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So, public hearing was scheduled for seven oh five as a continuation of the revision of the Town of Newbury's code for chapter one seventeen subdivision of land. We heard and had a presentation on this at our last meeting. There were a number of potential edits that needed to be made. I know George had a few. And so I guess that's what's being distributed now for us to take a look at. John, do you have it? Give it to Paul.
Thank you.
So how do you want us to go through this, Martha?
Well, there are a couple of things I wanted to point out to you all. And first of all, I'll note, I got an email from Chief Walker regarding the question on the water tank for fire protection. And in his email, he said they would like to keep that section as written for the moment. And in the future, at some point, they might want to discuss a viable alternative if applicants want to request a waiver. And their, their preference really is for the houses to be sprinkled, but without municipal water, that can't happen.
So it's of right now, they, they, well, I, that doesn't surprise me.
I, I, I think that's a good way to go.
I think it's a good way to go too.
Because any of these can be waived.
Yep.
At the fire chief's request. We have the right to waive it.
So keep it in. Because it would be circumstantial and.
Pardon me?
It would be circumstantial if you would allow that to occur. I mean, to, to give it up.
I would say we should leave it. We should accept Nate's suggestion. Yep.
Okay.
He gets to win all the arguments anyway.
He does. It's funny. It's funny how that happens.
We don't. Fire chief always gets to.
Always wins.
He should.
All right. Martha, do you want to walk us through this?
Yeah, so I did add a table of contents here. And in doing that, I actually noticed that we now have two sections on amendments. I've highlighted those here. The first one was added and that was one one seven three. And then we also had language in one one seven six six.
Oh, I get it. Okay. So were they both the same things?
They're pretty much, the one and three refers to Mass General Law, Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one Q, which the one and one one seven six six does not.
Okay. I mean, I, is it, this is out of the Mass General Law, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. So we can delete one or we can have a redundancy.
I don't mind the redundancy.
All right. And then Section one one seven ten, its title was Americans with Disabilities Act, but we actually added references to the Architectural Access Board, Massachusetts as well. So I'm thinking we might want to change that title.
Yes.
To.
Well, should it not include them both?
Yes, it should. And it does, yeah. So.
Yeah, I agree.
And we could call it something like accessibility requirements or something. Paul, do you have any suggestions?
Oh, I see. In, as the overall rubric to, okay.
Yes, yeah.
So the section is fine. It's just the heading you want to change.
The heading.
The heading isn't comprehensive enough.
What was the term you came up with?
Accessibility.
Accessibility.
Requirements.
And just to go back, sorry, to the one seventeen dash three, the amendments. Is it burdensome to take it out? I mean, does it?
I think if we were to take it out, would I, I don't want to renumber the entire document. So what, what we could do is say.
Make sure you've taken everything out, then it might've been reserved too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, right. Otherwise, we could take it out and just put reserved there and keep the number.
Keep it, keep it.
Keep it, okay.
Just the, that would be my preference, just because.
Well.
But I don't, I don't feel that strongly about it. I think it's cleaner, but.
Yeah, I, I mean, it is cleaner. But right now, I don't know, I'm not prepared to understand the difference and to read through it and to. Do we want, do we want to simply ask?
No, what we, what we would do is literally just take this out and just say reserved. And then you don't have to renumber anything. This is, if you look at it, John, it's, it's one sentence that's here. And that exact sentence is there.
And what I would do is if we do that, I'd add the Mass General Law reference there in the one seventeen sixty-six.
It's just so it would be.
You okay with that? You are?
I am. As long as the citation is added there. Substantively, it's not that big of a deal.
Right.
Okay.
I, I would just say, as someone who frequently has to come in and read bylaws and regulations, it's confusing to have very similar provision in two different spots. And you're gonna create some questions as to, you know, is there any difference between the two?
Right.
And why are they both there then if there isn't?
Right, right.
So it is cleaner to.
Okay.
To take it out. And, yeah.
All right. What else?
And then on page, page twenty, down near the bottom, J one, under copies of documents, the original subdivision rules and regs. In addition to the reproducible Mylar for the plan, also required Marlar reproducible and five prints of the street plan and profiles. That fell out for some reason, so I'm suggesting it go back in unless, John, you had.
Well, the thing that you need the Mylar for is the Land Survey's portion of it, which has all of the survey technical data. That needs to be, cor- correct me if I'm wrong, Paul, that needs to be filed with the registry. The subd- the engineering portion, the road cross-sections, utilities, et cetera, et cetera. They have nothing to do with land transfer, not land court issues at all. Those do not get filed with the registry. And I think it would be a good idea to just keep it simple, make everything, make it send a Mylar for anything. But it absolutely has to be. I, I don't, I'm not sure this is quite the right language. Maybe it is.
That's what we.
Street plan and profiles. And see, we don't care about the profiles. The plan.
Well, that's on the subdivision plan, but I think it's useful to have the profile as well.
Well, no, I would, I would go for Mylar for everything.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I would go for not just these. I would just everything in Mylar. That way, there's no issues. But the ones we absolutely have to have, because they have to be signed by us and filed in the registry.
Right.
That is, would be the survey plans, the parts that is signed by, stamped by a Land Survey. The details do not end up in the registry. They don't get filed in.
Okay.
Right. You're not.
Right. You need the lotting plan.
My lawyer brought in, said something dumb.
Not at all.
So should I, should I take that back out or leave it in?
I would just, I would just say one Mylar reproducible and five prints of the submission.
Of the submission, of everything.
Of everything. I'm not sure if that's clear here.
This is not outrageous.
So you need, you need to clarify that it's of everything.
Okay.
And if we, if we got the Mylar and we want more than five prints, we just run the print. There's no big deal.
No, that's, that's fine.
Okay.
All right. On page one one seven two two, under L one, at the very end, we had building, building inspector, but it actually should be building commissioner based on.
His title.
His title.
Okay. Okay.
Page one one seven two five, I just wanted to note that we do have a new diagram in here for classification of streets.
This is good.
And so the, the change was, you'll see, the twenty-six point five slash twenty-seven point five. And that represents the, the two different rights of way width that we have.
Okay. You have up here, did you just take this out there?
We've got a change on previous page two, right?
Yeah, some of these we had before, so I'm pointing at the new ones.
All right.
Okay, so the, the curb and the property line just above, that was from the previous one?
Yeah, that was in the previous one.
Okay.
And I'm not pointing out, George had a few sort of typographical edits, but I'm not pointing those out. They weren't substantive.
Okay.
I don't think we talked last time on page one seventeen twenty-eight. This is one we had last time. The new language for subdivision signs under one one seven two nine, just to make sure that everybody feels comfortable with that.
Yeah. What's not to feel comfortable about? That's exactly what I thought we said last time, last week, last meeting.
So, but it's not by right. It says maybe.
May.
Right.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Right. And then we already talked about one one seven three one, the fire protection. One one seven two nine, tried to go through and make the language regarding trees the same throughout.
Which one?
So, and I'm sorry, under one one seven three three A.
Okay.
And it refers to trees. And the language has been changed to over six inches in diameter at four feet above the ground. So that was a consistent change throughout.
That was in the last one. I thought that was my last one.
That was in the last one. There was one, I think it was this one that hadn't been caught.
Okay.
So I did that. On one one seven three one, under A three, catch basins. I think when John and I met with Joe Sirwodka, I think that we had agreed to change, catch basin shall have a minimum thirty inch sump. And the word minimum wasn't in the previous, uh, previous.
So it was just, it, it was, it was dictating thirty inch?
Right, right.
Okay.
And on, uh, page one one seven four O.
Retaining walls? Is that it?
No, it was one one seven, it was what we just talked about, the one one seven six six consolidating those items. And then there was a reference in one one seven six seven to that section on amendments. And we just had a wrong reference number, so I changed that.
Oh, okay. Okay.
And I'd just like to point it on one one seven six seven forms. This does say that the forms can be updated from time to time and it doesn't have to go through this hearing process. And we still do have forms which I feel need to be updated. And that hasn't been done as part of this, but I would still like to, to recommend that we take a look at those. There's a bunch.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess it should be.
And it goes through Form H, I think.
Yeah.
So.
Have you gone through them at all?
I've gone through some, like the ones for, for surety. And we've actually been using, using that a couple of times. So that one, I think the Form A just needs to be clarified, because applicants always seem to sign on the wrong line. So I just want to make that a little bit clearer for people, things like that.
Good.
And then the very last sheet, the diagram of the cross-section was changed. We had a redundancy of language in the compacted gravel base. So that's been deleted and cleaned up.
Okay.
Very stuttered.
I was just gonna say, who, who did this cross-section?
That was.
John?
My previous draftsman, who I still use occasionally.
Good.
He's working for a friend, so.
Is that it, Martha?
Yes.
So does board have any comments further on, on this document? Then I think that we, we want to have a motion to approve these.
Yeah, so if you want to close, close the public hearing and then if there's any discussion or deliberation, and then it would be a motion to adopt.
So I'd like to have a motion to close the public hearing on the subdivision land, chapter one seventeen.
Do you want to move?
Second.
Any further discussion on it? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then the motion to.
And then we need a motion to approve the chapter one seventeen subdivision of land as revised. Can we say this dated as of five four twenty sixteen? So we need something like that.
I move to adopt the chapter one seventeen subdivision of land as revised, May fourth, two thousand and sixteen, by this board.
Have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion about this? Well, before we vote, I'd like to thank again John and Martha for this.
I was about to thank Martha.
Because this, this is a labor of love and difficulty. David Powell, who's in the audience, knows how long we've worked on this. And it has been taking a long time. And so you're both to be congratulated. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Well done.
Thank you.
So let us return to the public hearing, all right, to whether you would like us to open the public hearing or continue it.
About what time on the eleventh can we continue it though?
What, well, what, what would be the difference for you?
Our assumption is that if, if we do get a vote, conditional approval, we'll be able to report that to Department of Public Utilities and essentially reserve the treatment for this project under the current program. We're assuming five PM is the deadline. So if we met early in the day, late in the morning.
That's impossible. Is it, can we meet early in the day? Well, the, the difficulty there is, I'm not sure the neighborhood residents can meet early in the day.
I could make it work, but.
And they have been a huge part of this, so I, I think.
And I'm not even sure Greg will be up when it's probably was. Sorry, is that meant?
Right, 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 right. Well, I, I think it would be difficult to meet before, before five o'clock. In terms of honoring the matter in which the, the reviews have gone. So I think that we could meet at six. And it could be over, it's still over in the same day.
I don't anticipate that it would be a short hearing.
It, don't anticipate it would be a short hearing, so may, may, maybe we could meet at five, five, five thirty or something like that. And.
What I'm saying is, i- if you, if the board did want to try to get it done before five, it would have to schedule it, I think, at two o'clock at the latest.
I, I don't want to do it in the afternoon. Now, first of all, Elizabeth takes too much time out of her work schedule. And the reason she's been able to work on this board is because she can come at night. And we've, so I think that's a problem. And the community group, or the, everybody in the, from the neighborhood, I, I think has a difficult time getting off during the day. So my instinct is no.
I wasn't suggesting that you do. I was just pointing out the difficulty. It would, it's not like you could do it at four.
I'm gonna ask, ask the board members to see if we can do something next Wednesday and at what time? And do you have any thoughts?
I can be here at any time on Wednesday.
Okay. Six o'clock, work for you?
Whatever, anytime though.
All right. So we would propose to continue, right?
If that's acceptable to the applicant.
If it's acceptable to the, to the applicant, that we would continue the hearing on the assumption George will get better. And that we will open it at six o'clock on.
What time?
Six.
Six.
Now, we didn't vote on that. We have to vote on that.
I want to know what I'm voting on.
But I guess before we vote on it, I'd ask for you guys to say, does that work? Okay. All right. So can I have a, you just made a motion. Can we have a second on that motion?
Second.
Any further discussion on that?
I've got a quick question. Why, why not Monday? We can't, we can't collect on Monday?
He's not, attorney's not available.
Okay, that's important.
I mean, you can do it without me, but it'll hurt my feelings.
No, I'm not gonna do it without you.
No.
You wouldn't want to.
Not, not doing that.
Not going.
So.
I appreciate that. I've, I've had clients before say, you know what, it's fine. I can meet without them. And it never feels good.
You'll never hear that from me.
Yeah, I just want, let me check and see what the availability of Town Hall is next Wednesday, so that we can also.
Well, let's set it for here, if we have to, we can have it at the library or at the Peter, at Peter Hall.
But we need to determine that now, right?
Oh, we do.
No, you need to continue it to a date certain.
Right, a date.
You need to post it.
Right.
And then, and then if we, if we find out the location tomorrow morning, that's okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So, any further discussion on the day and the time? Do I have a second, did I have a second? No.
John did.
You did? Okay, all those in favor?
I thought.
Aye.
Aye.
I thought.
You, you did the, you did the motion.
Do you want to do it?
No, you did the motion.
No, that's okay.
Okay, so that passes, so that's what we're doing.
So, it's six o'clock next Wednesday.
So, Alicia, so we're gonna move this to next Wednesday at, at, uh.
Six.
At six. Mr. Powell?
Uh, don't you have to have, should you? Your, uh, but I can't think of a word right now, but the, the people appearing before you make that request, as I remember.
They did. These are the people appearing before us, Borrego.
But they didn't, you have to have it physically as a request, it has to be submitted to.
It, it does not have to be a written request.
No. Doesn't have to be, that's, see, that's why he's here, Dave.
W- w- we are not under any particular timeframe right now. Um, the, the time period within which the Board will have some pressure upon it is once the hearing has been closed. So we don't need any sort of signature or, uh, assent by the applicant, in terms of continuing the time for the Board to finish its process. So, and, because it's a special permit, if this were a variance, or an appeal of a building inspector decision, or something along those lines, then you're on a timeframe for completing your hearing process, but not with a special permit. So you don't need anything in writing from the applicant agreeing to a continued.
So, do, do we assume, can I ask, uh, the applicant a question now?
As long as it's not substantive.
Well, I, it, it has to do with, at the next meeting, will you be answering the questions that, um, D E P. has raised in both, in both of the letters of December fifteenth and the last one? That's not substantive, is it?
That's, no, that, that's.
Will you be?
What information is to be presented at the next meeting?
That's right, what, 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 what information will you be bringing forward?
I can address them, but will they all be answered?
Okay, you'll address them? Okay.
And will I be able to submit additional info?
The hearing, the hearing is still open, you can.
If it's, if it's open, this is the whole thing, if it's open, you can submit information, as soon as it's closed, all information stops.
So the hearing will not be closed before next Wednesday. We're not taking any substantive oral testimony tonight, so that we can continue to have five members available to vote. But anytime between now and next Wednesday, if you want to submit anything in writing.
Are you closing next Wednesday, or just?
We don't know.
Okay.
Jean, I, I, I know I've encouraged this, and it's my mistake.
It's always me, though.
I know, it's always you, Jean. It's always Jean.
Good job.
Okay, what is it? You're supposed to go, you know, as you know, they can't hear you on the.
Ben, Ben didn't, but that's, yeah, that was my answer from the.
Yeah. You got it, right?
Thank you.
Okay.
So again, you can submit any additional information in writing prior to the hearing next Wednesday, and presuming we have a full complement of Board members for the hearing, you can present any oral testimony at that hearing.
Okay. So, I, I think that we're precluded from having any further discussion on Borrego at this point in time.
I do have one more question. Stand up with my.
Yeah, stand up with the, sta- thank you, Jean.
Is the public? Is the public hearing gonna open at six P M., or is the meeting gonna start?
Yes, six o'clock, 'cause we have nothing else on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay, so we really are done on one, one-thirty-six Main Street, AKA Borrego, until next Wednesday night, okay? Thank you all.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. I think that was a good move. Because if I could have tied, I, I think we could have. I think we could have denied that.
That was anticlimactic. It was about preparation for nothing.
Yeah, I spent a lot of time, review and everything.
Alright, the, um, our next issue really is the, um, the master plan survey results to date. I know that Martha sent out some of the, yeah, yeah, you're okay, you can make it home early tonight.
Thanks, Paul.
We have, um, we've got some preliminary results that were sent out last week, which showed sixty-five responses, and I'm not sure if we.
Oh, really?
And we actually, I just checked, we now have a hundred and forty-two responses.
See how great is that?
Geez.
So we've got a hundred and forty-two responses within, within a week to the survey, that is pretty good.
Right, and that's.
And we haven't advertised yet in the paper, and, um, so that's good, and that's just all the hard, the, the digital.
That's the digital, we do have, I've got a handful of, of, um, paper copies, which, um, here, I don't know, I haven't checked with Jean at the library yet to see what might be there. And Fred Thurlo actually grabbed a, a bunch yesterday and took them over to the Council on Aging.
Oh, good.
Oh, fantastic.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
Do, do we have any sense as to the demographic that?
Um, I'll tell you.
Yes.
Um, it's almost a tie between, uh, the thirty-five to forty-nine age range and the fifty to sixty-four.
Oh, good.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, that is good.
Yeah, about thirty-five percent are thirty-five to forty-nine, and maybe thirty-four percent are fifty to sixty-four. We've got about twenty percent sixty-five and over, and the young, younger demographic is just under ten percent. The twenty to thirty-four, nobody under twenty so far.
Well, it's all very interesting stuff, I, now, will you be sending this stuff out periodically, 'cause I got one last week? But I thought, everybody, did you get, did you get it? No, was it just sent to me?
Um, I actually don't remember, but what I can do is I can send you the link that Roberta sent to me, she wasn't sure if it was going to update automatically, but I just checked it and it does, so we can all check it periodically to see what the, what the response has been. And it's, it's actually very interesting to read through the surveys, other than the one person who was really keen on having ice cream everywhere through town, um, we got, we got some, um, some really, you know.
Thoughtful.
Thoughtful.
You know, the ones I saw were very thoughtful.
And, so, yeah, the, the, the open questions were very thoughtful.
Yeah, yeah.
And I did get, uh, did get a comment from one resident, um, who said that he thought it was a very good survey.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
It was not easy to do, there, I think, I, I still had issues myself with the last three questions, I thought they were complicated. And, uh, I'm happy to see that people understood it and could answer.
Right, and for people, um, I had a people, a couple people say that, um, you know, the multiple choice was pretty easy to get through, but once you started getting into the, you know, the open answers.
That's right.
And a couple people took at least two hours to do it.
Wow.
But, you know, they were being very, very thoughtful, yeah.
Well, they were into it.
Right, yeah.
Well, that's, that's really excellent.
Yeah.
Well, that's what we want.
Does the survey, when it's being done, is it timed, in response to?
Uh, that I don't know.
You mean immediately?
Yeah, kinda like, you know, how long does it take this person to complete the survey?
Did we get that feedback, yeah?
Oh, I don't know.
Yeah, I didn't see that, but I can ask Roberta.
I'm sure it does, I mean, it does.
But I think it popping up on the, uh, front page, on the homepage, it just directs right to it, which is wonderful.
Yeah, Susan did that yesterday, so.
Oh, so now it's on the homepage?
Yeah, yeah, it's right there.
That's great.
Oh, that's the best. That's excellent, because for, that's, when I did it, it was not, it was, we're in the, in our, in our.
Right, right, but now it's under news on the homepage, and she also did put a link to, uh, the hard copy, if people want to print that out and do it that way, but.
Oh.
You know, ideally most people.
I wonder, even when we have the results, we should make the results available to the people who've taken, to the, to the body politics, so to speak.
Yeah, no, absolutely, I think, um, whenever we have our public workshop, we can do that, and what we did last time was we put the survey and the tabulated results at the end of the master plan, so we can do that again.
So now we've given everyone to the twenty-seventh?
Yes.
So probably in early June, we could have something.
I would think so.
And, and then you could publish it, I mean, you could put it on the website, put the result, for, for results of survey, bang. That'd be interesting, that's great. Well, I, 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 early on in life, uh, did some early polling, and I tell you, everybody, it was always the most, it's the mother's milk of politics, I'll tell you. Great stuff. Anyway. Uh, updates border to Boston Trail, Clipper City Rail Trail, Phase two and three, that's you.
Um, that's me. Um, a couple, I'll start with the Clipper City Rail Trail, um, Phase two first, um, that's actually about to start construction. So that, that connects, um, sort of the, the water end of Phase one, and loops back around and, uh, back up through Marches Hill up to.
It goes under High Street, under High Street?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so that's starting at the, at the river and working back?
At the river, yeah.
Okay.
And then where does it, where, where will that end?
So, uh, right now, it ends at Parker, you know where the, the metal gate is, right next to the cemetery.
Yep, yep.
Um, and so they expect to be starting surveying and hope to start clearing and grubbing at the middle of this month, so, um.
Is it gonna have a macadam or a, a?
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be paved.
Paved.
Yeah, and there's gonna be a little pullout on Parker Street for just a couple of cars to, uh, for people who want to park at this end and, and go down.
And the contract's been awarded, isn't it?
Yeah, the contract has been awarded, um, Jordy told me it's E T. and L., I think, E T. and L.
I don't know that.
I think that's who they are.
Okay.
But they've got, uh, quite a track record of building these trails, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, really? Good.
And so we have their contact information, I've given it to James, um, who is actually planning on paving Parker Street next week. Um, and to the police chief and fire, in case there are any issues.
James into it, that's good, that's good to hear.
Have, have you got a map there, or is there a place we can get a good map of this?
If you looked at an overview, a Google map of downtown Newburyport, you can almost see it.
Yeah, you can almost see it, and I have it in my office if you want.
It's an old train line that went from the waterfront, and eventually went out to where? It was its own line, wasn't it?
Right, well, it connected back to, um, and it continues down, kind of past Matt's property and back down to the.
Back down to that, to that, to that spur, so this was a spur, I think, from that line?
I think, John, is that right?
John, would you know?
Sorry?
Was, uh, was that route the spur from?
The main line?
The main line?
It was the, what they call the city line, it came off the main line about where the Western Division joined it, which is the other side of Route one.
Got it.
And went down through the neighborhood, across a whole bunch of streets, under them, the bridges are gone, but they, there were bridges there, uh, forty, fifty years ago. And then it went along, um, you know where the seawall is on Water Street? The Newburyport end, the downtown end of that, was where the track went through, and it went between the yacht club and et cetera. Ran along and terminated down right about where the embankment is on the central waterfront.
Is it a freight line?
It was freight, oh, yeah, no passengers there, no, that was totally freight. And there was a freight yard where, uh, the Pond Street C V S. is, there was another spur.
Right, 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 right.
Yeah, and that, uh, the, the freight came in there, railway express and all that.
Right.
And the main passenger was up on Washington Street. There's a sign there now with a picture of it and all that.
Right, right. Well, that's good news.
And Jim, the other place, if you're really interested, you could look on, uh, Newburyport's website under Planning and Development, and I think they have a whole section there.
Yeah.
Jordy Vining is their project manager for that. Uh, the other thing we're gonna start talking about, um, and I think Jordy is gonna come to our transportation working group meeting, um, to discuss, is the Phase three section of the trail.
Which goes through Newbury?
Well, it, they're talking about some different options, um, one, going, you know, continuing down through Newbury, or trying to do something that actually picks up on Old Parker Street, which goes through in front of the, um, uh, the courthouse.
Oh.
And it potentially gets.
And then, and then what?
Well, that, that's the question, that's part of what has to be.
And then hooks, and then hooks up with the existing trail?
And then hooks up with the existing trail, I think, and goes back, so, um, there are some options there, and it may get tied into whatever they're thinking about reconfiguration of the rotary or, you know, something happening there, it's very difficult.
It's not easy.
They're just north of that crossing, old crossing, there is a traffic light, they could be tweaked to let pedestrians across over there.
Right, right.
M, uh, the, um, M V P C, Tony, is, I know, looking at various options for the circle.
Right.
One of which is getting rid of the circle, and, uh, also making it much more pedestrian friendly, so I just don't know what phase he's, he's at.
So all of this kind of ties, ties together.
Yeah.
So.
That's great.
So anyway.
And what would be their timing of getting this done?
Um.
And they have the money?
I don't know, I don't know if they have the money, I think they would have to, they'd have to go through design, you know, the whole design process, and get that done and approved, and, and get the construction funding, and it would be on the tip at some point, I would think.
Yeah. Good news.
So, anyway, um, that's it for that one.
What about the next one?
And the next one? Um. This is for, just kind of an F Y I., um, which Joe has probably mentioned at the, uh, M V P C. meetings, um, but after.
Yes.
Many years of work, um, the multi-hazard mitigation plan update has been approved by FEMA and M E M A. Um, we started working on this in two thousand and eight, um, and that was the end of, of that five-year plan, so, um, now we've got one.
You've got a great future, you're a P A.
Yeah, really. Um, so I'm just gonna pass this around, I'm not gonna go through it, but, um, the next step is to get it adopted by, um, have an adoption resolution signed by the selectman.
Right, we don't, we advise them, is that all?
You know, I don't even think.
Yeah, not even that?
So what I'm, what I'm gonna do is, is, um, Joe Cosgrove actually put together this, this as a PowerPoint for me, so I'm gonna, um, give that to the selectman on the twenty-fourth.
Oh, good.
And it's actually quite relevant, because we are working, hopefully, with Newburyport on a, on a grant application that would be under the FEMA grant program. So, um, so the, the, the timing on that is, is good. But, um, you know, when you have a chance, there is a, a link to it on N V P C.'s website, I want to get one on ours as well. But, um, take a look through, if you go back, uh, I'm not sure which slide it is, there's, um, just the beginning of the, the action plan with a number of, number of bullets there, and that was, that was the hardest part for us to get approved by FEMA and M E M A, because they were actually looking for concrete projects, which, you know, could be identified and, and potentially funded. You know, they weren't looking for fuzzy kinds of things like review, um, whatever.
What's the relationship of this document to the plans that you all both are working on relative to assessment of sea level rise and et cetera?
I pulled, um, some of the items that we've been discussing in those meetings and, and referenced stuff that's coming out of it in the action plan here. As things for us concretely to work on, and sort of reference that in general, um.
This is a little more detailed.
This is, well.
A lot more?
It, and this is, this is a multi-hazard thing, so it, it addresses, you know, all kinds of things, and that's when really climate change and, and sea level rise and coastal resiliency, so that, that is kind of a subset of, of the multi-hazard plan.
Okay. And so, uh, go back over again, this is out of date, and this will bring us up to date, are we out of compliance, or are we in compliance?
We, yeah, the last plan, uh, basically terminated in two thousand and eight.
Oh.
And so without.
I'd say we're out of compliance.
Or wait, it was the, no, it was a two thou-, I'm sorry, it was a two thousand and eight plan, and it.
Oh.
Expired in twenty thirteen.
Twenty thirteen.
Right.
That's not that bad.
So, um, but this now allows us to apply for FEMA grants, um, as soon as it gets adopted.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Why is Amesbury not part of the regional plan?
I don't know why they're not part of the regional plan.
Well, they're just giving information, but it's somewhere earlier, it says they're all communities except for Amesbury.
The plan itself, the revised plan, this is, this is advertising, is the plan itself online now?
It's on M V P C.'s website.
M V P C.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna work with Susan to get it on our website as well.
Any Board members have any questions further on this?
Well, I'll just note that we have the highest percentage of land within the floodplain of any of the other communities.
Yeah.
But fewer buildings.
Yeah, probably fewer, you know, sensitive, um, man-made elements. Yeah, probably fewer, you know, sensitive, man-made elements.
Actually, that's not true. We have, we have a high number of buildings. They're just apparently not valued.
Oh, really?
Terribly high.
Where are you, where are you showing? Oh, you're in there.
Assistant buildings. So here's 517 buildings, but the values... Probably residential, not commercial.
I mean, Lawrence, Salisbury. Anyway, right, take a look at this at your own leisure. Liaison reports the Board of Selectmen.
Nothing too recent, since the last one was really town meeting. They are, they are actually gonna be having a brief meeting this coming Tuesday, but I think mostly because there are some liquor licenses and other business that needs to be attended to.
Okay.
But their next, it's gonna be very short, so the next substantive meeting will be the 24th.
Okay. MVPC, really not much, except their June meeting is gonna be June 23rd, and I forget the location, but it's J. Ash.
Regional Planning Day.
Regional Planning Day, and I think it's at Essex, is it Essex County, Essex Community College usually, or something?
I don't remember. They've had it different places. They have...
Anyway, J. Ash, for those of you who don't know him, is really quite, quite accomplished guy. He's from Chelsea, and he's the Secretary for Housing and Economic Development for the Commonwealth. He's a good friend of the, the Governors. I know why he was appointed, because Baker is 6'8" and J. Ash is 6'6". And, but he was the, he was the city manager in, in Chelsea, and really did an extraordinary job. He's from Chelsea. So anyway, he's, he's the keynote speaker, and if anyone has any, I'll, I'll send something out, and if you have any interest in going, he's worthwhile listening to. Not, doesn't have that much applicable to us, but has a lot applicable to Newburyport and to Amesbury, because most of their stuff are urban initiatives. But it should be interesting. And then, then MVPC takes the summer off. They take July and August off, and they don't meet again until September. Conservation Commission?
Haven't met since the last planning board meeting.
Okay. And the CBA, George is not here to enlighten us, so with that, anything else? Anybody want to bring up? Any thoughts on anything? Then I entertain a motion to dismiss.
Move to adjourn.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Done.